Adequate notice that this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law, nineteen seventy-five.
Good evening, everybody. Let's have a location, please, with a saloon. Excuse me, meditation. But also I'd like to make a comment. We lost a employee this past week, Steve Morris, who was a personal friend of mine and also worked for Public Works. I worked with him for many years at my company, Kane Steel, and he was a good man, and just like to let you all know that he'd be sorely missed. So with that, let's say. A flag salute. Mr. Marshall, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Here.
Commissioner Saro.
Here.
Commissioner Marchand.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Soleo.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
New Jersey Transit Public Hearing Notice received January thirty, twenty twenty-four, concerning proposed fair changes to increase fees by no more than fifteen percent effective July first, twenty twenty-four, with future annual fare increases of no more than three percent. A list of hearing dates and locations can be made available upon request for obtained from New Jersey, newjerseytransit.com/hearing. Notice of filing a public hearing for the South Jersey Gas dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four is a matter of petition of South Jersey Gas Company for approval of new energy efficient programs and associated cost recovery pursuant to the Clean Energy Act, VP New Docket Number Q zero one nine zero one zero zero four zero and G O two hundred nine zero six twenty. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment on resolution items only?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we start, other comment, it's been stated to us that because there's been some feedback from the public, that being able to complete their questions has been unfair to most because they don't get their five minutes in. So with that, we're going to have anybody who comes up to speak through five minutes, ask their questions. After we're completed, then we will then have the answers given to you either directly from some of the departments and or at a later date, if necessary, where we can't have, we don't have the answers at a particular time. So with that, we can move on to public comment.
Good evening, Dean Milk, Attorney Field. Resolution two oh two four one three two. It's a resolution establishing common time to adjourn, operating a subcommittee and appointing Somebody give us a little more information what these people are affected to actually do, and if it is to be designed and figure out how to make the thing, I should hope some line workers would be in there.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Hawke.
Anyone else? Please. Okay.
Motion closed.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
What about, um, um, was it Nancy?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Oh, Nancy. Well, we're right here.
I'm on the way.
Are you in Mexico again?
For what sixteen. A local union awarding hardship for providing middle mile, also for state and community services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, which is three million five hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. I have a couple of questions about this. Question number one would be, whether they do the work or not, they get this much money? And if this grant does come through, the way will anyone coming through? We're going to be responsible for getting on this much money? That's my question.
Thank you, Mrs. Ridgeway. All right, now, it's already officially closed, so we didn't know that Mrs. Ridgeway was on, so we made an exception for at this point. All right, at that point, let's move on, and do we want?
Consent resolutions.
Director, you want, you want us to provide the responses?
I was, I was going to say, would you like to do it now or after the resolutions are?
It's your pleasure.
Okay, my pleasure, then. Let's read the resolutions and then we'll make the decision.
Okay, agreed.
Position of consent agenda.
We may not remember what the question was.
I have my own agenda, so we're good.
Consent resolutions. We're voting on resolutions. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any commissioner, board member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent agenda on resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one eighteen through twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-two?
Second.
Do we have any questions, comments, or discussions on the consent resolutions?
Okay, commissioners, you have one and a half minutes to make a comment, or anybody? Okay. Motion closed.
Second. Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one eighteen through twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-two by consent?
Should I move?
Second. Do you have any discussion, comments?
I have one comment. This is on the number, this is on the, on thirty-nine, one thirty-nine, which I thought was going to be taken off, but it's not. One thirty-nine, I hope for the future that, and I was told that it's, this is a pass bill we're paying, which is fine, but I hope for the future that we actually do this in-house, and I've expressed that to the director, to our solicitor, which now we have an extra solicitor, assistant solicitor, we should be able to do this, and save the money and use it on our own, you know, to keep the money and use it in for our budget. This, I was told this, this bill has ranged from thirty thousand, this is ten thousand five hundred fifty, so it would be a significant savings, or at least a savings to the county, but still, that's a lot of money, so, okay, thank you.
So noted, Commissioner, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to bunch the two questions, so don't forget that what the questions were. All right, so the first one was for resolution number one thirty-two.
This is one of the.
The jail, I think, or second, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'll take a shot.
Thank you.
If you'd like, so this proposed regional involves representatives of Gloucester, Salem, and Cumberland, and certainly that there is an agreement that the stakeholders need to be involved, that of course would include local police, corrections officers, prosecutors, defenders. At this point, they're very nascent stages, there are, the wardens are meeting, and I was tasked with tagging along with them, in fact, I'm in Salem County Jail tomorrow, and they are talking about what this jail needs to have, what services, what design, et cetera. So that would be a very initial starting point of the needs. In the meantime, there is a working group set up which talks about the money and the formulation of the entity that's going to have to go to the local government finance board for approval. Tonight, part of the agenda is the resolution that would authorize the reimbursement or expenditure coming towards a grant for putting this together, a leak created, such as the M4, as well as for architectural work and also for engineering work regarding to the proposed setup of the jail. The question was, who would be involved, and the answer is eventually all those stakeholders need to be a part of that picture at the very early stages, where we haven't gotten to an architect stage or a planning stage. We've had one meeting thus far with all the wardens present, and part of that group is reporting up, so the notes of that group were forward to the main group to try to.
Did you also mention about the statute, statute, statute that has been applied by the state recently about the perpetual ownerships?
Yeah, so when we started, there was a kind of a clunky, older regional authority statute that we were working with. Since that time, at the end of twenty twenty-three, there became a new statute that calls for a local government finance board approval, calls for an entity to take, to do its own bonds, have its own counsel, have its own charge department, essentially standing on its own two feet. So as we started down this road, the planning field shifted a bit, and of course, not where we want to be, but it appears that we're first in line to go down this road, which is of course why we're trying to, hopefully, it would be appropriate, and because we're trying to carve a new path around it.
There was some question in the last meeting, solicitor, about ownership of the land.
Sure. Ownership of the. So, yeah, the first entity, the first statute talked about a duration. The new statute, as it's been updated, is perpetual, and that means that there is no end date, so there was question about land or about the investment, and of course, the truth is, it will be, it will wind up being contractual, but there is no end date, so it's not Cumberland putting money in, and then we're going to be kicked out. And let me be very clear, my experience here on behalf of Cumberland, you've been hurt sometimes by shared services agreements, because of course, they rely on excess capacity and a willingness to make that available right into our county, and we had at least one agreement that I can think of where without capacity is of no utility to us whatsoever to assist in that way. This is not a shared service, this is we're all in together, all right?
I think that satisfies. Any else?
May I just?
That's, that's pretty much answered your question, though.
Yeah, yeah, may I just, yes, something, um, well, we have four parties, three parties, correct? Three counties.
Three counties that are currently saying they're interested.
Okay. It's the, it's the visage of fifteen of the three counties which plays together, it's very, that's very important, and basically what it's, you're looking at, a jail that pre-existed, you're looking at a jail that basically you're adding on to, and you're making renovations to. So, and this now, it becomes whole ownership, in a sense, to all three counties, which now reduces the cost because nobody makes any money having a jail in their county. So therefore, we're investigating the way this particular jail should be modeled now because the needs are going to be, going to be different, and we are going to basically, hopefully, put some reduction to our costs by county by county, and these are the things that we're looking at. This board is considering all these particular things along with what they would like to see in this new particular jail.
What kind of safeguards do you have where, let's say, one of the counties changes political parties, it goes?
It says nothing to do with being political.
Pardon?
It says nothing to being political.
What kind of, what kind of?
Same counties are very delicate, those, they probably doesn't matter.
If I may, the way the statute is designed, if we're all, we're all in, I think, county wants out, they would have to negotiate with the remaining two counties.
It's, it's like, it's like anything else, it's all a contract.
And lastly, I'll, I'll add, since we're.
You're doing the quality.
Yeah, I really don't want to, too much back and forth, you know, so.
But it was a key, it's a key to that everybody was together as a partner, not, we're not shared, it's not a contract, it's, we're together, and this is a partnership, we've joined, so.
And the tiebreaker is the party that brings the most inmates to the table, which regrettably.
And we just have.
I would love to, I would love to, I'd honor this.
Aren't we fortunate?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hawke, thank you, Mr. Carr. Okay, the other one was around sixty, if I'm not mistaken, how much, and who's responsible was the basis of the question?
She was asking, yeah, she was asking if this cut, that if, we did get the money, we did get the money, and we can withdraw at any time right now, all right, so.
Yeah, so let me, so the first question was whether if they do the work or not, will they be entitled to the money? The answer is no, we only pay when services are rendered, and this, this contract is a maximum not to exceed. As far as proceeding with any work, we control that. So while we award the contract, they can't proceed until we tell them to do something. So there's, and maybe this isn't the appropriate way of saying it, but we hold the leash in that way. So as far as any payment of funds, the three point five million is about, two point five of that is the federal share, the balance is the match, of which Cumberland's is around six hundred, and then Salem's is around four hundred. So as far as drawing down any federal funds, we're allowed to request in advance within thirty days if we know when the bill's going to be coming due, what the amount is, so we are able to draw it down at that point, and then invoice Salem for their share, and then at that point, then we can cut the check, that way it's, we're not advancing any money on anyone else's behalf.
We're not holding it back because this is part of the process of hard, this is the next step, hard, this is our engineer, this is the, after we get, had the rig, our, our engineer consult part, we're at the design part, and the buddy, is this is all part of that project that we put in, and that's where, that's where they give us the money.
Yeah, I got one of the other questions, sorry. Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay. I, I think what's important to note to everybody, we're not paying somebody three million dollars, three point, five million dollars. We're not paying anybody three point five million dollars. This is only saying that the money is accessible, we're only going to be paying the jobs that they do, so this is just making the funds available, it does not mean we're spending the whole amount, okay? And that's very important, that this process is moving along slowly, and that if we need something done, we have the funds to do it, we have them do it, and then what we do is we pay them as we go along, is that correct?
We bench.
I think that is what's important to the people coming.
We're being fiscally responsible for the money that will be spent, to see what was voted in last year is a actual feasible project, and that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of it all. Is it feasible? The engineers are now going to give us those answers, and then we know where we need to go in the future. That's pretty much in a nutshell. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Commissioners? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-three, resolution authorizing and approving additional temporary budget appropriations in the amount of five million nine hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Aubrey. Soleo.
You may mix you with a Starfleet mayor.
Soleo.
You start mixing the names, you're running, yeah.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-four, resolution awarding Baron open professional service contract for providing council services for the Cumberland County Thane Board, RFP number twenty-three dash sixty-eight, resupped. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-five, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State contract vendor for network upgrade of Baron system for the Cumberland County nine eleven communication center. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-six, resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement with commercial township concerning replacement of a county owed bridge on Miller Avenue with commercial township. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-seven, resolution authorizing application to grant funding from the Attorney General's Office for the state fiscal year twenty twenty-four, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation together grant program. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-eight, resolution authorizing local recreation improvement grant application. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-nine, resolution authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities grant. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing professional legal services in the matter of Emanuel Thomas Anderson versus Cumberland County, F. O., U.S. District Court, District of New Jersey, Docket Number one colon twenty-two dash C V dash six two three five. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-one, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-four dash one thirteen, authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement with commercial township for resurancing of a county-owned roadway within commercial township. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-two, resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between PBA Local Number two nine nine S and the County of Cumberland slash Sheriff's Office for four years effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. The, on these, this is the, we've had a couple of unions that we've given Congress to, I want to congratulate the staff because we got a few more that are being settled as we're going. It's, it's not been an easy year, because I think five in a row, we're doing, five in a row, you're going to see two of them, actually three. This is a, a good step, and it's actually going to put us in great footing for, for the future of the county, because we're getting them all out of the way, and we'll be able to concentrate what we have to do to prove as we go. So I would say yes, and good, thank you for doing that.
I have a very small comment. Comment is, I just told Mr. Hawke a few moments ago what my comment was going to be, and this is one of the things that I want to give kudos to our departments and to the Attorney who are handling these cases. This particular board feels like they're the school manager at ShopRite, and basically what they have seen in the last year or so is a cleanup in aisle one, cleanup in aisle two, cleanup in aisle four, cleanup in aisle twelve, and we're finally getting this close thing repaired, getting this stop, this stop back on the shelves again, and helping the community and helping our employees in the county, and I just want to say that you guys did a great job, along with all the commissioners who have been supportive of our administration, so I want to just thank you all.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-three, resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between UPS EU, the County of Cumberland, and the Prosecutor's Office for five years effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-four, resolution amending twenty twenty-three dash five sixty-eight entitled, resolution authorizing submission and acceptance of child advocacy development grants, treatment services, programs, technology, and capital improvements for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Do I have a motion and second?
Should I move?
Second. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey. Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-165, resolution amending 2023-601 entitled, resolution authorizing grant agreement with New Jersey Department of Transportation for 2023 federal road program, FAP 23 Cumberland County 1. Do I have a motion and second?
Should move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-166, resolution authorizing Cumberland County to accept amended joint bankruptcy plan to Endo International PLC concerning opioid claim. Do I have a motion and second?
Should move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, a question of this, is this, how's this affect our buddy we're receiving, the group for the opioid settlement?
So this is one, that's a very small fraction of the opioid settlements that you got, but there was a wave of bankruptcies.
Of course.
So this was all a recommendation of council handling the collection of the opioid funds, saying that your best shot to collect maximum. I don't have a dollar amount, all the others.
But we're, this, the receiving of money, we're going to continue, whatever money they put aside for the bankruptcy, we're going to still get the money as we do.
As well as the public opioid companies.
It's just one, okay.
This has stretched over so many years, is that correct?
No.
Correct.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-167, resolution amending resolution 2024-11, appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as liaisons to the Cumberland County Board of Elections. Do I have a motion and second?
Should move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-168, resolution awarding a contract for providing middle mile grant program engineering services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number 23-45. Do I have a motion and second?
Should move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. The, I, Mr. Ridgeway started this, that I understand that this shall not exceed this number, but they bid on this number if this project continues. I assume if they're going to do what we've asked them to do, they're going to get paid the money they, the RFP. So it might be little things from different parts of it that they may not do, but this is going to get us to the design phase of this project, which is the key, because the design makes everything go. The design is done well, the construction goes easier. So this is, I have not seen the company itself, these, a lot of the members here have seen this company really like what they're, what they represent, what they bring to the table, and what, and their own history of projects they've been involved with. They've been very successful. So hopefully with that, if they're looking at our project, they make our project successful as they designed it, and then get the construction. There is a timeframe for this project. It's not, this is not a pipe dream ten years from now. There is a ticking time that the federal government wants this done, which is two years. And we're well within that, we're proceeding that way in that timeframe, so, thanks.
Any further questions or comments?
Yes, a comment that I would have, and Mr. Ridgeway can correct me if I'm wrong. With all that being said, this will be, there will be benchmarks set, and we'll be keeping a tight view to see how the process is going along. We're certainly not cutting a check, as Mr. Sorrow said earlier, for three and a half million dollars. We're going to be keeping a tight rein on it to see exactly what's going on per the benchmark.
Correct. Yeah, they don't proceed until we tell them to, in what fashion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-169, resolution ratifying and confirming the board of affair and open contract for providing vaccination services for the Board of Health, RFP number 23-70. Do I have a motion and second?
Should move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Saleo.
Yes.
That's all.
Treasurer's report, please.
I'm sorry.
We've been waiting for this.
Yeah, I can't wait to talk about the same numbers.
This is an incredibly boring report. Sorry for everyone in the public. All right, so we began the month of January with a cash balance of $26,114,968.38. Cash receipts of $5,910,194.42. Disbursements of $8,576,076.27. Ending the month with a balance of $23,449,086.53. Itemized list of investments, grand total of $61,962,332.59. So that was the boring part. Now, the fun update part. So our, as part of our year-end procedures, we have to file an annual financial statement with the State Division of Local Government Services. That has been done. The annual debt statement has been done. The budget has been reviewed with Finance Committee and is for recommendation to the board. I need to figure out when that's going to take place. My thought is at the work session in March, and then adopt in the work session in April. That way, it's its own thing and its own meeting, not talk down with all the voting resolutions. I have to figure out how to get my hour and a half presentation down. So unless we want to do that again, but I got to try and cut down, because I rambled for a very long time last year. So just wanted to give the board that update. I'm going to send an email to all the board members of the budget summary. Every bureaucratic resolution will be placed before you on the March work session. And if there's any questions, the Finance Committee have been met with already, so any other board members, if you want to meet in advance of the introduction or in advance of the final public hearing, let's go with me. My schedule's open. Trying to get this done before July, when I have a kick. So trying to get this done quickly. Motion and second, you can adopt the treasurer's report.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment and ball salaries and wages?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Same moves.
Good evening, I'm here in person now. I was just flying. Hi, Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. I would like to know if under the Open Public Meetings Act, are you really supposed to be using your cell phones in a meeting when this is a public meeting? Can I know what you're doing on your cell phones? I mean, I'm supposed to know what's going on in here.
Good question.
I know.
So listen.
Do you want to enter now, or are we going to take notes?
No, I'm saying, that question, is that, okay, that's, okay, it's a very good question, Mrs. Ridgeway. Anything else?
Well, if I can open your cell phones, then I'm going to make a recommendation that you leave your cell phones outside the room before you come in here. Okay?
So that's two questions? All right.
No, it was a recommendation.
Well, it's a consideration, yes. Anything else?
I'm thinking. I've got five minutes.
You've got five minutes.
I say about my senior moment here. Hi, everybody. Good to see you for a while. Sorry I was late. But, yeah, that's the main one, is about your cell phone usage during a public meeting. Let's work on that. Thank you.
Hey, Chuck Abino, Director for the Department of Corrections. I just wanted to inform, I guess, both the commissioners and the public at the same time. Not sure, I think most of the commissioners would be aware that we are subject to an annual inspection of the jail every year by the New Jersey Department of Corrections. It's part of the oversight that they provide. And we just completed, it's a rather in-depth inspection, they're there for a week, involves, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six hundred standards. And last year, we just completed it this year, and I'm pleased and I want to congratulate my staff, particularly Warden Riggins and Captain Brog, and Captain Martinez assisted well, but primarily the Warden and Captain Brog. We passed all of our standards. We have eight that still need a little bit of work. Just, most of them are very minor issues, they'll come back and do the reinspection. And just to give you some comparison, last year, we spent, we had, I think, thirty-eight or thirty-nine that were in non-compliance initially, and it took us two additional reinspections. Most of the nine that were not in compliance this year are relatively minor issues that we should have resolved without much problem. So it's, you know, I wanted to congratulate my staff and also notify you publicly of how well we did this year, so. Thank you, sir.
Glad you congratulated each other.
Congratulations. That's a very refreshing comment coming from you.
If you come back every month.
I feel bad.
Dean Hawke, during the meeting here, I think you mentioned that since we had the largest jail, we...
Amount of inmates.
Population.
Most amount of inmates, population.
Oh, okay. Did I also, or did I hear someone say that we were going to be using this jail in that project? Or would the project be completely separate from this jail?
Okay, well, address that again after any of your questions. Any other questions?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right, that's, good question. Thank you, Mr. Hawke. You got a hot in the cut, right?
Sandy Acevino, Upper Deerfield Township. Can somebody explain the details around the Resolution 2024-130 and 141? What we're rescinding and what we're replacing it with, and why there's a need for, you know, a need for it, period?
Which chair did you say it was on?
130 and 141.
Okay, that's...
And on 168, how many proposals did we get for that?
They're in the back. They're listed.
No.
Oh, sorry.
They are listed.
They're in the back.
All right, thanks.
Speak now, I don't know the pieces, I said. You want to go back up? Yeah, you have two of them, it's there.
Let's consider double digits.
That's right, that's right.
Double digits. Hi, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. We go after a lot of grant money. And there was grant money available for the Board of Elections to get a storage building. And I'd like to know if that grant money is still available.
Okay. All right. Does that motion, anyone else with that to get up and speak first? Can I have a motion and to close, probably?
Should move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we got to open up the...
I think the cell phones is the question of the day.
That's correct.
Yeah, so certainly you as a board are for one, right, that your phone activity is best taking place on your county phone device, and that the messages, the phone logs, all that, texts are all subject to Oprah. Everybody already knows that. I don't know of any current law about phone use in meetings, because the paper and the pencil have gone by the way of notes kept on cell phones. So sitting here, I don't have the perfect answer, but I will take it under advisement and report. But I believe that what we're going to find out is I actually see judges now. Back in the day, it used to, if your phone came out in court, your phone would go off, right? It's no longer, it's no longer just a communication device. It's also information, storage, and access. And I know a lot of times that I sat before you and looked stuff up or tried to find companies so that the meeting can flow in a smooth fashion. But I will--
We're not going to investigate that.
We're not going to get rid of the issue. We're going to keep going, but that's my initial thoughts.
Is there anybody else on the side?
So that's number one.
And number 130 was the next one.
So I can, Resolution 130, I know the most about probably, and that would be, my misunderstanding, when Carlos Endahart came on board, he was listed as an employee and he should have been listed as a vendor.
As a vendor.
So we're correcting that record. He was never paid incorrectly, but it was a record that was at Stan at the county because he, it came before--
Right, right.
Yeah, so I was then corrected. He is now a vendor. And from what I understand, a successful owner of his activity. That's the answer to how 130 came aboard.
Thank you. And the next one was 140.
131.
141. 141. Which is the same--
Same thing.
You didn't complete the question, though. I was asking what the need was.
He, he-- So it sort of just--
So what I said is Carlos Endahart was hired incorrectly as an employee, but he should have been hired as a vendor.
Right.
So that's what the correction was. Is that acceptable?
The need, why do we need an attorney over there?
Because they're handling child support matters in court almost every day for us. And he used to be a full-time employee and now is a vendor on a part-time basis.
Well, she's saving about $40,000 a year. Tell me something that I can hear. Again, fiscally responsible. All right. And one question was, the Board of Elections, the grant. Now, I don't, I can't answer that. I would pick either Mr. Ridgeway or we have to have Mr. Riley as the answer.
I know the screen. Board of Elections listed here.
Are they later?
Listed this year, yes.
Oh, there you go.
I really didn't want to scream.
I guess I could have gotten up. Sorry.
Nancy, Nancy. No, I'm just kidding. No, so far, as far as we know from the state, they require that we get three quotes. I was told by purchasing that we wouldn't be able to get official quotes because we would need a bid. And for a bid, we need commitment from the state. The state, again, can't commit unless we get the quotes. So right now, it's out of standstill. It's out of standstill. And I honestly believe that because we waited so long that they will not give us any money.
Well, we are totally left in the dark. We did open 3,000 square feet of space in our old Juvenile Center for you, which relieved a lot where you could store machines. Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
So you do have--
We did, and we do, we do have that, and we do appreciate it, and it's already filled.
Okay.
It's already filled. And unfortunately, right now, you know, as far as our office space in itself, you know, we have office staff with very small desks on the side because we don't have space to officially put them on a proper desk.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I hope that brings the answers to a close. I may have been wrong.
No, there's the one about the reference to our jail buildings.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, my apologies. But I didn't take every provision again there, so.
Want to speak to that?
Okay, if you wish.
Sure. So certainly at this point, where we're focusing on is the main jail building, which is situated in Salem, to a period. But our jail building is an asset, you could say. I already stated some sections of it, but I can't tell you what that's going to come to at this point. But it is something on the table. So for instance, if each county rolls in, then presumably their transportation bands, right, would be offered up as an asset into the group as well as any building space, certainly all the employees. With every employee, each county has, we're still going to be hiring as the anticipation. But as to the structure itself--
It's an, basically, it's an open-ended question at this point in time because we do have to make the transition from this jail to the new jail once it's been, you know, and added on to. So we need to have our inmates somewhere at this point. Now, in the meantime, there are other needs for the county, and these are the things we're relying on, the wardens, the prosecutors, to see, you know, what else is needed, you know? And we're not the experts in, unfortunately, the jail business, but we will be more than happy to facilitate any needs that are needed. Youth facility or anything of that nature. I can't, there's so many things on the board right now, I can't even mention it.
The most out-of-the-box idea that's been floated has been a youth facility because you're spending about $300 a night for youth, is that right?
286 was one of them.
Okay, so $286 a night, and we're having a hard time placing around the city. But that's a far off, that is not the job one--
No, there's a lot of different things.
But it's certainly not going to be demolished just to demolish it.
Right.
Which is why we've been keeping it up.
Yeah.
That's why Director has been so vigilant to get things up to par. And now that jail is looking pretty darn good with lipstick on a pig, right there. Mr. Peter.
Let's not let's not call her name. She belongs to us. She is ours.
She is ours. Director.
I'm sure your points are not a good place to spend the night, but--
Is that Hotel Six?
No, not yet, not quite. But we do leave the light on.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I think what's imperative that everybody realizes, how important this negotiation is with Salem County. We're going to go tomorrow to look at the jail, get a guide through it. If you look at the check dispersals this month, all right, between what we're paying Hudson County and the RX for prisoners, comes to one cent, just that, one cent on the tax dollar. That's a lot of money. So if people don't think we need to do this and they're completely gone, this is something that we have to work at. And I really do believe this board is doing everything possible to expedite what's going on here. So I want to give everybody credit, that, you know, either the people that are going tomorrow to see the jail or all the support that this board is giving to have this work. Because as I said, just those two things, that's one cent on the dollar. I mean, what's that on your taxes? And that's just Hudson County. That's not even what we're paying for our young people, children. So this is something that I believe is very important, and I think that this board should be very happy with what it's doing.
Took a long time to put this together, so. Okay, with that said, I want to mention those--
Commissioner comments.
Commissioner, oh, we're not better. Okay.
We have those--
We already did it.
You did those, yeah, okay. So then Commissioner comments. Start with the--
Well, the, attended the Bay Shore Council, just many things. They're trying to make sure they spread out more members, people attend. They've reached out to, to similar Booker staff to make sure they attend. Usually they do attend those meetings. And they're also looking at our new assembly people at the third, at the Senate, to attend those Bay Shore Council. These people are all volunteers, and it is a, the Bay Shore Council tackles issues that with the D P, everybody knows how frustrating, frustrating it is to deal with them on issues or fight something that they're putting out there. These guys are the ones that do it. It affects our whole bottom of our, the county. So I, I, we should congratulate them for what they do, the job they do every day as volunteers to tackle whatever issue comes from the state. So I say thank you for doing that. Thank you for volunteering. The Cultural Heritage, Commissioner, a meeting. Ms. Loos, Commissioner Loos will probably know a lot more how it is, get my foot first stepped into it. They seem very aggressive. They seem on top of stuff. We have new members coming aboard for that, so we should have a full, full staff, I hope, shortly. And they do a lot of, through this county, a lot of things you see. And I'll just point out one that pops on my head. The statues on Landis Avenue that people saw that stuck out, which were actually pretty impressive how things just happened. Well, the Cultural Heritage is what brought them here. They were bought, leased, right? Now they're gone. I saw today, they were gone. But pretty special, and I'll give you one personal thing. A friend of mine came in, was born and raised in Violin, came in from Japan, and he said, take me, take me to someone that's changed. So I said, well, we'll come to the Landis Theater. And he said, comes and he goes, he looks at the trumpet player in front of the theater. He's like, oh my God, is this Violin? This is what happened? He was so impressed. There's pictures, he sent them back to Japan to show people. I mean, just seems very little, very small, but it was very neat to him that he saw his hometown do something off the wall. Cultural Heritage did that, and you can make comments on other things as a category. The library is trying to get the word out that, of our new branch in Morrison Township is coming together. It's the first thing, first time we're actually, it'll be up, I've said it several times, this board is set and this commission, they, that's the, that's what they're trying to do, let people know what's coming. And they plan to be very, be a lot of needs that are not being need, that being met at first when it comes to minus, that people can, a bathroom in front, that they can wash their hands from a trip being around the southern part of the county. Allowed it to where to go to, but places where people can host stuff. Our staff can have a satellite office to go down to meet people the southern part of the county, tackle problems there. They have a place to work out of. Our jet is very, our director of the library is very, has a lot of ideas how to make this all special. And the greatest thing, the best thing is that literacy, it's going to affect the literacy in the lower cap part of our county because they have no library facilities. And when I say library, it's not a traditional library anymore. It's a center. So pretty special, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Sauer?
Busy, busy, busy. Lot of meetings I went to, Zoom meetings with Little Mile, Zoom meetings with the jail, Zoom meetings with Down Township. Lot of things I can't really speak out because there's, there's a lot of money involved and that type of thing, but I've been very busy at that. I'm on different boards. The Recreation Commission I'm on, and I'm really happy to be on that. I have a lot of ideas that we, we've been tossing around at that first meeting. These first meetings that I've been going to, I'm actually sitting back just listening to just learn of what's going on. But with the Recreation Commission, everybody knows, and if you don't, this board is very into trying to create a recreation commission where we have places where people can go. Well, we were looking into where we would have something like three. We haven't run it across the board yet, only because it's just in, it's just in the discussion stages with the Recreation Committee. You know, something that might be in Bridgeton, something that might be in the center of the county, and something that might be in Violin and Millville. This is something where we could spread it out throughout the county so that people can go walk, be with their children, be with their animals, get fresh air. They're finding out that that may help you out a little bit, which will bring out, you know, the health situation in the county, which we've already raised it from 21st and now 20th, and we're even moving that up. So we're moving forward with that. I'm also on the Youth Services Advisory Council with Commissioner Loos.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Yes, I'll be there. And again, this is something that I'm learning again. I was on it a number of years ago. It has to do with our youths, and, but believe me when I tell you, it's a great, a great committee to be on. So I can't wait to even learn more. I'm working on the acronyms. Because when they start, I have no doubt they're talking. It's, it's, it's an amazing thing. They start talking and I got this. Yeah. Okay. In fact, the very first time I ever went to one of these board meetings, at the end, they said to me, Commissioner, what do you think? I said, could you please give me the pages of acronyms that you use? And I thought maybe it was going to be a page. It was like three pages of acronyms. So again, you learn a lot, and I still have a lot to learn when it comes to that board. But we're moving forward, and I'm very, very proud to be on this board. Thank you.
Let's go down the other side. Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. As Mr. Commissioner Sauer pointed out, very busy. As a new board member here for two months, I've been appointed to be a liaison to a number of different boards. I'm learning a lot. I'm meeting a lot of new people. I'm even coming across some old people I knew in the past and reconnecting with them. I'm trying to listen, I'm trying to learn, and being able to bring various things to Cumberland County. But this may be completely off topic. Today's just happened to be a very special night for me. It happens to be my mom's birthday. So I just have to say happy birthday to my mom. Anyone who knows her knows what a loving, caring, fantastic person she was, she was a teacher at Oakwell Elementary for 37 years, very beloved over there. I couldn't ask for a better mom, more supportive. So happy birthday, Mom. I hope you enjoyed your day.
Thank you.
Good son.
I don't know if she's watching. I would doubt if she is.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you. Well, as a new commissioner, it's a learning experience. As Jim and Art have stated, I've had the opportunity to attend the Board of Health meeting. And I'll tell you, if you do have the time to sit in Zoom, I know Mrs. Ridgeway was on the call for a period of time, but that board is very active in pursuing grants. They are getting a vehicle. They've waited, I think, a couple of years, and so now they're all excited about their new vehicle. I also attended the Agricultural Development Board meeting there again. It's a learning experience. You sit back, you listen, and they have public, an opportunity for the public to attend. So I invite you all to attend the next meeting. It's very informative. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Loos.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So my focus is really health and education, and I'm now, thank you very much, Commissioner, for putting me on the Mental Health Advisory Board as well. That's something that I have really enjoyed, and I think all of these things go really hand in hand to improving the climate and the quality of life that we have here in Cumberland County. And that is my goal as an educator, as a mother, as somebody with a lot of history in this county, and I want to be able to see future generations stay here and thrive here and where people come here and not leave. These things are really important to me. So I have to say that I have to give my hat off to Melissa Niles. So with the Mental Health Advisory Board, first of all, you're on, like so many boards that I'm on, I see you there all the time, but the ideas that you are constantly coming up with to really try to help people who are struggling with addiction with mental health services, I have, my hat goes off to you. Recently, you just came up with, coming up with, I guess, a lunch bunch, which I think is really great. It's a way for mental health professionals to kind of get together on a regular basis and collaborate. And any, any of you who are professionals in this room, and all of you, you know that when you get together with other professionals in your field, that's only helps you to grow, right? You share ideas, you thrive off of one another, and that's how we really get better at what we do. So I'm so glad that you created a platform for that. Also, I know you guys are working on a grief booklet. Sadly, we continue to be rising in the numbers of losing people to overdose in Cumberland County. And I am no stranger to that concept at all. And so I'd like to formally tell you, can I please be on your committee to help with the grief booklet? So I think that's a fantastic thing, and that's a really direct outreach to our families and people in need in this county. So thank you for doing that, and I'm happy to be a part of that. I will go on to Culture and Heritage. And yes, Commissioner Albrecht, you are correct. That is a very busy board. We are a nine-member board, and so we have a lot of people. And what's really exciting about that board is everybody has sort of a different facet in the arts world, in the culture of Cumberland County, because there is so much. We are so culturally rich here. So we are, when, I will mention what you mentioned about the statues, the sculptures that were on Landis Avenue. That was part of a grant, actually, that Culture and Heritage had given to Violin Downtown, and they were able to sort of pivot the funds. It was originally supposed to be for a mural, and they were able to allow that concession to pivot and use some of them for the sculptures to bring art and culture to downtown urban areas. And I was really happy that the board was able to sort of make that pivot where it made sense. Also, we are working with the State Arts Cultural Alliance, with the Arts Connector Program. And this was a pilot program that they did last year. And basically, what that meant was that we had an individual who was in the art world here in Cumberland County and would host events, would kind of do outreach to sort of try to uplift other artists in the county who were creating amazing things and try to show them how to feature their art, how to market their art, how to become a little bit more. So we did just name a new connector who's a Hispanic artist here in Cumberland County, and we're hoping to have different outreach to make more, to kind of create more diverse artists in Cumberland County. Because I know that there are so many incredible artists, and I worked at Bridgeton High School for eight years. I know we have some incredible artists come out of there that were creating murals right here in downtown Bridgeton. So I'm really excited to see what this connector, new connector is able to do. Also, we are going to talk a little bit more tonight, I believe, about our county park. And yes, recreation was a big goal for us, getting into public service for me as well. And maybe it doesn't sound like a huge deal, but it is. Cumberland County is the only county in the state of New Jersey without a county park. And while you might think, wow, we have so much open space, we have parks everywhere. We don't actually have a county park in Cumberland County, and we are very much working to change that. So there have been updates planned and scheduled for our county fairgrounds park and expansion off of that to include all kinds of really exciting things. Trails, outdoor classrooms, indigenous gardens, things like this that not only are giving us an open space for people to recreate, but are helping the environment and also will further a unique, diverse education. Okay? Is that me to hurry up or?
No, no, that is true.
Oh, snap, snap up? All right, I like that. And lastly, I apologize, but I do want to say that we gave our county, our state of the county update this past week, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Cilio. And we had Dr. Keating there as well. And I just really want to highlight the partnership that this county has engaged with, with RCSJ. And it's been a really amazing partnership. Just this month, we had RCSJ partner with our Violin Public School District to make Violin a collegiate high school. And yes, we do have dual credit programs in all of our high schools, but now this makes it a much more intimate process where students don't just have to follow this path and graduate with an associate's degree, but now we actually have RCSJ in our guidance department, actually guiding our students right there. Take a class, maybe one, maybe two, whatever they're able to bite off instead of the entire associate's degree and putting too much on our students that maybe they can't handle. And there's only four of these pilot programs in the state of New Jersey. So I'm so glad that RCSJ decided to partner with one of our schools here in the county. And also, June 1st, we have our School of Osteopathic Medicine, which is opening up on the RCSJ campus. Very much looking forward to that. We're going to have addiction medicine there. We have the CARES program for neglected children. We have the RISN program, their behavioral health services. And we are partnered with Virtua Health Systems. So basically, that's kind of the capstone to that heads and meds corridor, which is going to really just fuel the economic development that can happen here in Cumberland County. And we already have the quality of life to go with it, with the education and with our recreation. So that is my update.
Give the teacher the floor and look what you get, right?
I forgot my pattern. I was going to put it on my phone.
Commissioner Romero, please.
Well, enough has been said, right? I just, last, this week, I went to, last week, I went to DOS. I had a great time talking to all the employees. Lou showed me around. I spoke with every employee. I was, you know, I was there, supervisors. And one thing, you know, I seen a lot less complaints, a lot more happy people. So I-- So I, there's a bright side to all this. Also, while I was there, I was still talking to a little, a little girl that I knew about when she was three years old, Lucille Custodio. And she happens to retire this week after 30 years in service to our county. So I was very happy to, you know, to see her do well and go on. We're going to miss her because we're actually two, three, I think we're three people short now after she leaves in that department. And, but this is something we're working on very strong, and Lucy's working on it to really get people to stay. It used to be a career job to work in social service. Nowadays, we're losing 25 to 30 some employees a year, and we need to improve that. That's, that's very important facing our community, social services, and we cannot longer continue to, you know, it takes a lot of time to train people. We put a lot of money into them, and then they leave. So I was very happy to see Lucille, you know, retired and spent 30 years, and this is the way to go. This is, this is what we, we work for. We work for people to make careers out of our county. And hopefully, some of our kids will come back and give us back in our county, in our communities, in our county, which is very important. Well, that's, that's about all I have to say today, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I'm not going to keep you guys long, because I know you probably want to go. So first of all, I would like to touch upon the Royal College of South Jersey and the cooperation between them and Vineland. It's a great new program where kids can actually, students can actually find out, you know, what they're interested in, you know, even before they get out of school, and do they want to go into college? Do you want to go into trades? It's very important. When I joke, when I gave the State of the County, I said, you know, when I was at high school, I was a wrestler. I had no idea what I wanted to do. I went to college, and I ended up being an art major. I couldn't even draw. So I had no, I had no direction. But then I became a business major and decided on what I was going to do. But I wasted a whole semester thinking about these kind of things, and it was ridiculous. And this is the kind of thing that is great for these children today, you know, to get a pathway, find, find out which way they want to go when they're taken. As, you know, Yogi Bear used to say, "If you find a fork in the road, you take it." Well, a lot of times, you know, they don't even know how to take it. So that's number one. Number two, it's, we have a school of advanced manufacturing that we're working on right now also, Royal College. It's in the infant stage, looking at growing, to bury it together. And again, this is something that's going to help economic development for the area. Because we have two beautiful resources in this county. One, we have beauty. We have beautiful waterways. We have a beautiful waterfront down Fort Askew, not that way. We have a lot of youthful nature areas, but we also want to retain that, preserve it, but we also want to have places where our children can graduate college and stay within the county. This is very important because we have Exodus in Cumberland County, and in New Jersey, much higher than in other states. We need to start retaining our children in our, in our area and have, give them good working, good jobs, good-paying jobs, to help them work and play and live here, and hopefully not go chasing your kids over down in California to go see your grandson or your granddaughter. So that's important. And two, the biggest thing is we started within all the commissioners, an ambassador program. Now, this is very important for the mayors to take hold of each commission. There's two commissioners per township and municipality that are assigned. So we will be sending out an email to all the mayors that each commissioner will be assigned to that particular township and/or city. The reason for this is because there's got to be a direct connection between the mayors, the councilmen, and your community members directly with the county, and this is important. So that's going to go out this week. I made the assignments because I went under basically what they're, what they, what they're not even knowing. So that's a little bit important to understand is that when a commissioner comes into your area, he may not have been from your area before, but he'll learn real quickly what your needs are because he's not tainted in any way. It's very important for them to know that. So that's, that's one of the things we're doing. So ambassador program for the county is going to come out very shortly. And last but not least, I spoke briefly about the contracts. Retaining good people is so important. You pay them well, they'll do the job, and they'll be happy in those positions. We have a lot of employees within the county itself, but we have a lot of them outside the county. We've done a lot of good things so far with settling contracts, and again, I want to give my condolences, excuse me, I don't say condolences, my congratulatory statement to Paige, Jeff, John. Am I over five minutes?
One minute.
I have one minute? Okay. All right. And I just, so I guess we're going to go. Anyway, the point is that we want to keep these jobs in place and give people a good place to work so we can go out and say, "Hey, look, I live in Cumberland County. I work in Cumberland County. I work for Cumberland County, and I'm a pretty happy employee." And we're working on that time and time again. So thank you very much. Good night.
Do you not have executive session?
We don't have any reason for executive session, do we? All right.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move. Second. All right.
This has been a QBC Television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and live streams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC. Programming that serves the South Jersey market.